Oh, please.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Here.
Commissioner Opelt.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
We have Quorm.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two issues on our work session tonight. We have to decide we want public comment. There's not much public here.
Ms. You want to say anything?
Well, we have a couple of candidates here who might want to say something.
Okay, fine.
I move we approve, or we, what do we allow public comment?
Second.
You might not approve of it.
Yeah.
Would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. First thing on the agenda is an update from K-State, and we're very pleased to have the president of K-State with us.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Well, yes. Jared? Is that all? Let's see, it doesn't sound like it's on.
I think the button got pushed when you moved it.
How about that? Ooh, that's good. Well, good evening. It's certainly a pleasure for me to be here. I enjoy the opportunity to provide an update about Kansas State University. In particular, the progress that we've made to the next generation land-grant university strategic plan that takes us to 2030 and beyond. And throughout this presentation, I'll certainly talk about the community relationships that have been built along the way with our strategy. You know, we say that this year, in many ways, it's been a historic year. It's been a record-breaking year for a lot of the things that we think that really matter to K-State and a lot of things that we believe are important for the community. The first one is around enrollment, right? We all know how important student enrollment is, and it was the biggest issue when I arrived in Manhattan some three years ago, and we were a little bit above 18,500 students when we started, if you remember. It was a tale of about eight or nine years of decline. We've done a good job over the last few years, kind of climbing back up, and we're happy to say that as of September the 2nd, there were 21,182 students. The 20th day is actually today, and we will report on what those numbers are on October the 1st. That's the official numbers. Our numbers are a little bit higher than this at the moment, so we're expecting a number on October 1st to be a little bit higher than that. So we've grown several thousand students. We all know how important that is with the town gown relationship, with rental properties, with hotels, with restaurants. We think that we can be a big help to the economy here in Manhattan. You'll see, too, that a little over 3,800 is the third highest first-time freshman class that we've had in the history of K-State, so we're very much turning that trend around. Research is another important piece. Research is important because it elevates the reputation of the university. It helps to attract really good people, both faculty and students and staff, and it also helps to keep really good people at this university as we build the reputation for serving the needs of Kansans, but also for having an international excellence in certain areas. So you'll see our funding increased by 21.5%. That's the largest increase in our history and likely the largest increase of any land-grant university in the United States, and you'll see we have something called HERD numbers. It's just the total amount of money that's spent for research increased from 217 to 264 million. We have a goal to get that number to 200, excuse me, 300 million by 2030. You know, legislative funding was another really important goal when I first started. We were hovering around $5 to $6 million a year for about 15 or 20 years with support from our federal government and support from our state government, both for system asks for all the universities as well as specific asks for Kansas State University, and this is where the team has really excelled. I think three years ago, we were somewhere around 42 million, and then the last couple of years, last year was 137.5 million for both state and federal funding, and then this year, 150.4 million from state funding, very specifically. I'm going to talk about some of the projects that have been funded over the last couple of years to give you an idea of how we've strategically utilized this opportunity. We're also spending a lot of investments on facilities, and you'll see that we'll have over $500 million invested on facilities, I think, this year just for the College of Agriculture. There'll be some seven ribbon cuttings. We had one today. Seven ribbon cuttings for new capital facilities amounting to a little bit over $210 million, and that was a partnership with the state, federal governments, and philanthropy through K-State. We're about 95% of the way that we need to be there, you know, a year before all these buildings will actually be opened up and for use, which is kind of remarkable. That never happens. You're normally left with a 20-year bill on these kinds of buildings. Fundraising was another important area. If you think about what a president does, a president's there for vision, for strategy, but also for resources. So we talked about resources with tuition with students. We talked about resources through state and federal funding. Fundraising, we have a goal to be to $2 billion in fundraising by 2030 at the end of our strategic plan, and we ratchet up 10 million every year. So our goal last year was 200 million, and you'll see we're almost $100 million over goal. You know, and I think that has to do with a really strong team that's in place, but I think also you've got this great momentum and these great ideas. And I just think our donors and our supporters of K-State are just rising to the top to be able to help support us. K-State athletics, really important. I think, as you know, with everything that's going on with NIL and revenue sharing and all the challenges we have with athletics, it's a big challenge for a president. A president spends 25 to 30% of their time now working with athletics and on athletics. Of course, we have all sorts of great things that happen every year. The really exciting thing this year from a team perspective was our women's basketball team reached the Sweet 16 for only the fourth time in history, and we also have the highest level of alumni that we've ever had, 217,000 alumni, but we haven't had an increase in alumni membership in 14 years. And this year, we had 1,000 new members from the Alumni Association, which talks about the connection that we're having with our alumni, especially young alumni all over the country. So this is kind of where we're heading. We're heading towards 30,000 students at K-State, or 30,000 learners. And really, you've got to think about learners as those that are going after a degree and those that might not go after a degree, maybe a credential program, a certificate program. I think we're listening to what the future of people of Kansas are needing relative to education, and not everybody wants a degree. In fact, that number's gone from 57% to 41% of high school students going to any college seeking a degree. And so we've got to figure out how to do a better job of talking about the value of higher education and at the same time, help those other people with a career path and provide them with different kinds of education. You can see our goal for degree-seeking, that's on the Manhattan campus, the Salina campus, and the Olathe campus, and some online is somewhere around 24,000. Between 23,000 and 25,000 is where we think we can land. That'll be an all-time high. That'll be higher than where we were back in 2014. And then you can see with non-degree learners, these certificate credential programs, another 5,000 to 7,000 students or learners. Really proud of two things, and if you can remember anything from tonight, it's what we do to be able to help support our students and sell this incredible student experience at K-State. 96% of our students get a job or further their education in medical school or veterinary school within six months after graduation. That's an amazing statistic, which means we do a really good job of preparing our students for the future and for future jobs that are available. 81% of them receive financial aid, financial support. That's four times higher than any other university that I've worked at. We are recognizing that student debt and student affordability are really important issues, and so we've raised a little over $200 million in the last six or seven years, before my time and during my time, to be able to support both in-state and out-of-state students. Just to get a sense of where our students are coming from, all over Kansas, all over the nation, and all over the country, just to give you a sense, last year, we were up almost 8% in in-state enrollment and about 14% in out-of-state enrollment. We offer a new opportunity for out-of-state students. For those high-performing students, they can get in-state tuition or a great reduction on out-of-state tuition, and that's made a big difference as we recruit students from Texas and Nebraska and Oklahoma and Colorado and Arkansas and other places around the country. You know, we're really proud of this, and you know, someone was asking me today, how do we differentiate K-State from any other university or any other land-grant university, and it has to do with things like this. This is the Princeton Review as it rates the interaction of the students with the university, but we've got friendly students. We've got an incredible quality of life, a great connection between our faculty and our students, and we support our students in a way that I've never seen in any other land-grant, and so we need to sell that incredible student experience that we all celebrate at Kansas State and in Manhattan, Kansas. You'll hear a little bit more about this in the future. You know, a land-grant is a tri-part mission. It's research, teaching, and engagement. What makes us different from KU and other universities in the state is we're involved and engaged in all 105 counties and communities, meeting their needs, helping to drive economic growth, helping to create jobs, helping with community vitality, helping with 4H and youth programs, all the things that are really important to these communities as they do everything they can to thrive. You'll see, as we grow out, four areas that will really differentiate us: community health and well-being, sustainability, both financial and environmental, global food security and virus security, where we're already one of the best in the world, and enabling technologies like artificial intelligence, as an example, or data analytics. I had mentioned, again, we were up 22% last year. We're really proud of that. We're doing everything we can to be able to help support our faculty, creating better facilities for them, creating programmatic support to be able to help them thrive and be successful with competitive grants, and today, about 50% of our faculty are involved in research that's funded competitively by our government or by industry. One of those pieces we look at is faculty-initiated competitive awards, and so you'll see the goal there is 210 million by 2025 and then 270 million by 2030, and you can see we were having a nice tick up in growth from 2003 to 2023 to 2024. This year, we would have been $96 million more than I'm showing on this slide, but I think, as you know, there's been some changes that have been made relative to research funding that is either no longer available or that research funding has been taken away from universities. So we are adapting. We are changing to the new way forward and look forward to, you know, getting back on track and increasing these competitive dollars for research. Just a couple of examples of big projects. We had a big sustainability project, environmental sustainability program for agronomy, for yield of corn and other crops. It's a $2 million project, and a $10 million USDA award to be able to help support water resource management so that water resource management, so that farmers have better access and are more efficient with the water that they have to be able to use as an input for their crops. A lot of things happening, too, with interdisciplinary initiatives. So I had mentioned all these dollars coming into K-State from our state government over the last couple of years. I'm just going to provide you two examples. The first one is biomanufacturing. If you look at jobs in the state of Kansas, we believe that greater than 50% of all new jobs in the future will have some component associated with advanced manufacturing. Our take on advanced manufacturing at K-State is biomanufacturing, and you'll see that we received a $5 million recurring support from the state for three things: updating facilities, renovating facilities, modernized equipment, and 12 faculty that represent different disciplines. So we've hired eight faculty over four different colleges, as an example, to be able to support that important area of research, and I think, more importantly, workforce development for the state. Kansas Water Institute, this was a group of faculty that was put together. 85 faculty across eight different colleges. When we put them together, we put together a request to the state to be able to support a new Kansas Water Institute. Again, we were fortunate. We received $5 million in support, recurring, also 12 faculty that we're going to hire, modernized equipment and new facilities, and we also, at the same time, put these people together, and they were energized about writing a grant, and they got a $10 million grant. And so this is, I wanted you to see kind of how we're thinking and what we're trying to do in order to be able to build a better K-State that's more responsive to the needs and the ideas that are coming from Kansas. All of this information we obtained from going around the state. We visited all 105 counties the first couple of years and listened to what our stakeholders and communities were looking for and expected from K-State. Another great victory this year, we have a Kansas veterinary diagnostic laboratory. It's a $130 million facility. That'll be on the campus, kind of right behind the vet school, right behind the Pat Roberts BSL Level III facility. This $130 million facility, the state provided $128 million, which is really unusual for them to put such a large amount into a building, but I think they're recognizing how important it is to our stakeholders and to our farmers. But if you look at what we're doing here, really strong vet school, one of the strongest and fastest-growing animal science departments in the country, a BSL Level III facility, which is highly unique, a BSL Level IV facility for all species of animals, doesn't exist anywhere else in the world. This is the last piece to the puzzle to make Kansas State the best in the world when you think about animal disease and diagnostics and vaccine development. Fundraising, I had mentioned. This year, a record towards our $1 billion goal. Some of the highlights this year were for facilities, fundraising for scholarships, and another concept called applied learning. So we have a goal that all of our students will be involved in an extraordinary opportunity during the time that they're here, international experience, maybe it's an internship, maybe it's leadership in student government, something different that they're getting a different set of tools that they can take with them as they become leaders, as they leave college, but also something that they can talk about in a job interview that makes them shine above the rest. Again, state and federal funding. Again, 137.5 million last year, 150.4 million this year. That's just the state. We're waiting for federal funding to come in, and we feel quite confident that that number will increase significantly if we pass a budget over the next several weeks.
That should be an M, right?
Pardon me?
That should be an M.
Oh, yeah, that should be an M, thank you. Yeah, we got to change that. If we had 150.4 billion, I wouldn't be here today. Thank you for catching that. I did want to show a couple of things. There's 11 buildings that are being built as a part of what's called the Agricultural Innovation Initiative. We added on the beef feedlot to this project over the last year, and most of these buildings will be done and completed by September of this next year. It's going to be a really exciting time on campus. We'll have our first celebration and ribbon cutting for the livestock arena. So this is the competitive livestock arena. It's called the Bilbury Family Event Center. This is up on top of the hill by the MBF facility, so we've taken the livestock facility away from where it used to be in between Call Hall and Weber Hall, so the Weber Arena no longer exists. There's actually a quarter of that arena in Weber Hall for students to be able to learn and get the hands-on experiences. But this Bilbury Event Center will enable us to go from two to 30, maybe 40 events a year. Think about what that's going to do for the student experience. Think about what that's going to do for recruiting students. 4H and FFA and high school students are going to come here from all over the country, but really think about what this is going to do for Manhattan, Kansas, relative to summertime restaurants and shopping facilities and hotels. We think it's just a great contribution to the town gown relationship. That's going to be important from an economic perspective. We'll have four buildings with the Agronomy Research and Innovation Center, so this is right across from Bill Snyder Stadium. That'll support applied and basic research for agronomy, so you're looking at field crops like corn and soybeans, small grains and wheat, and those buildings will be completed in May of 2026. And then the King Building is the Global Center for Food and Grain Innovation. It's a $127 million building. It sits in between Call Hall and Weber Hall. Call Hall and Weber Hall will be renovated. They will then have a passageway into the Food and Grain Innovation Center, and we're best in the world when it comes to food and grain innovation. The idea is to be able to take us to the next level. It'll be all around, it'd be about interdisciplinary work, building these interdisciplinary teams across departments and across colleges, but it's also going to be private-public partnerships where industry will be in the building taking advantage and leveraging our ideas and resources to solve really complex problems. Just to remind you, we are the land-grant. We are a little bit different. You know, I was involved with the team visiting all 105 counties in the first year and a half or so. That hasn't stopped. We have teams that are out visiting this entire state. I probably was in 20 counties this summer in western Kansas to be able to ensure that I'm listening to what's important to our stakeholders, and I'm in their backyard. It's a big difference if you're in their backyard versus them coming to you and telling you of their concerns. Internationally, we also have a great presence. We have lost a lot of international students over the last couple of years because of COVID. We're trying to regain that back and be very strategic as to the kinds of students that we go after and try to recruit to K-State as well as the kind of research that we do, and we've got a big report that should be out in the next couple of months, which talks about the specific strategies globally for us to be able to develop partnerships and relationships. Athletics is kind of cool. You know, that's one of the neatest things about K-State. It's just fun. And it's different here, I will tell you, than it is at Purdue and even Ohio State. It's very, very different here in the excitement and I think what it does to bring our community together. We had one of our golfers that won the amateur championship in Augusta, which I understand is a pretty hard golf course to play. You'd have to pay me $150.4 billion to play that course. And of course, we're excited about our alumni. We're small in size. When you take a look at us compared to, like, if you look at the Big 12, we're about half the size of the alumni compared to anyone else in the Big 12, but we're number one in the Big 12 when it comes to alumni membership, which I think shows our connection and our passion. We are K-State. We are the next-generation land-grant university. I'll take any questions if.
Questions, comments?
Questions or comments.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, you talked about HERD funding. Is that an acronym?
Yeah, HERD. What does HERD stand for? Higher Education Research and Development Fund.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and so what that is, it's a way to look at all of the investments that are made into research. That could be competitive grants. It could be state dollars. It could be federal dollars. So typically, what you like to see is with competitive funding from faculty, you like to see this. But with HERD funding, it's not unusual to do this. So as an example, we got $128 million for a veterinary diagnostic facility this year. We probably won't get that next year, and that'll show up.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know. We'll see. But that'll show up.
Okay.
And it's very important for us from a ranking perspective.
Okay.
President Linton, most of my career was supported by working directly with or supported by USAID-funded
Yeah.
programs. It was heartbreaking to me to see the dismantling of the program.
Yeah.
It's a pretty severe loss to the university to see that discrepancy in funding that you are, that you reported. An ancillary issue, or maybe not so ancillary, might be direct, is the impact on recruiting international students.
Yeah.
We've had a long history of recruiting from Paraguay, from Botswana, from Nigeria, from Kenya, places where K-State researchers were extremely active.
Yeah.
Without that pipeline right now, can you just touch on what is going to be some of the recruiting strategies?
Yeah, if you look at our international students today versus before COVID, they're about half. Part of that's due to COVID. Part of that's due to difficulties, in some cases, getting access to the United States for education. And of course, another big part of it is USAID funding. We were the, with UC Davis, we were the top two universities in the country for international agriculture. It was our bread and butter. And so I think what we're doing now is we're recognizing, and if you look at the total amount of funding, we lost about $96 million in research funding, got about 28 to 30 back, so if you do the subtraction, you can see what the impact was. We did get one of the USAID projects back, but it's the only one that came back in the country. All the other USAID funding was lost. So we have to think differently. We have to think about how do we engage globally? How do we go after different forms of funding, whether it be through foundations like the Bill and Melinda Gate Foundation, as an example, funds so much work, so much important work in international countries, especially Africa. I think the other thing, we're looking forward to getting the report back from the International Programs Office about where they think we have specific strength advantages, not only in recruiting students, but helping countries and doing research with companies. We have to, in a sense, reinvent ourselves, but we have an incredible team in place that knows how to do it really well. And so, you know, even some of the faculty that had USAID funding, within months, they had significant funding that they were able to obtain. We just have to do more of that. We have to learn and adapt and look at what the new normal's going to be, and the new normal's going to be even more different for international funding for things like agriculture research. But it's a big adjustment for us.
Thank you.
Question? Yeah.
Other questions?
Just want to congratulate you on those enrollment numbers and getting that back up.
Thank you.
The challenges are going to keep on coming now that we're hitting 25, and the 18-year-olds are going to keep going down, so and I know every other university's working on all the same things, so it's going to be competitive, so good luck with that in the future.
Thank you. I have a lot of faith in my team, and they do a really good job of providing estimates, and we're estimating that we'll get to that 23,500 to 24,000 by 2030, and that's a conservative estimate with additional philanthropy, with additional reach out out of state. That's been the big difference. You know, four years ago, we were like 82, 83% in-state, 17, 18% out-of-state. We've had to shift that to like 63% in-state, 37% out-of-state, because we simply don't have enough students, enough students that want to go to college with the amount of universities and community colleges and technical colleges that are here in Kansas, and so our strategy's been quite different. We have to look inside, but we also have to look outside, which we think and hope will bring in additional students from outside of Kansas with the hope of keeping them in Kansas. So a lot of strategy happening. I've got great confidence in the team, and while other universities are concerned about dips, I think we'll be pretty strong until we get to 2029 and 2030, and then we're going to have to see what the outlook looks like.
So along those lines, do you have any kind of estimates of how many of those students or what percentage of those students are actual resident students on campus versus online?
I think there's about 3,000 students online.
Okay.
So, and there's about 80% of the students are undergraduates, so let's say 16,500, something like that. 3,000 of them are online. The online one is the easiest one to grow. It's simple. You almost don't have to do anything, but we have to think about who we are as a university and who we are as an institution. We think people being on our physical campuses is critically important for what our culture is and what our mission is, and we're also cognizant of this town gown relationship. We don't build a town gown relationship when we grow online students. Yeah.
We work on it.
We do, but it's harder.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it's interesting. The first year we started talking about this, the question was, why not just grow that to 7,000 or 8,000? It wouldn't be hard to do, but we felt like that's not K-State. Yeah. Will that change in the future? I don't know, but right now, it's not what K-State is.
Well, I applaud what you're trying to do, and I think it's really important that we have the public understand some of the things we do. Often, pure research, pure scientific studies, people don't see the application in everyday life, and I'm very concerned with this sort of anti-science vibes we're getting from DC. People need to understand that America leads because it does this kind of pure science, and you can only really do that kind of thing at universities, because, you know, Procter &amp; Gamble's is not going to work on certain things. They're going to work on better soap. And we need people to really do those basics that have brought us things like the COVID vaccine in six months. I mean, that was just an amazing science.
We've got to have a good balance of what we call basic research and applied research. I do think we are moving more towards what Kansans believe that they think and they need relative to research. Some of that translates, some of that translates into applied. I think the trend in moving forward in the future, my guess is there's going to be less government funding to be able to support basic research, and there's probably going to be more of an opportunity to work with industries to be able to support applied research, so I think the general trend is the opportunity is going to be more so for applied research, but that means we got to find a different way to do basic research. Maybe that's through philanthropy, or maybe that's through foundations that we're not yet working with, but you make a really, really good point. It's the only job and the only place where you have freedom to do research for the importance of doing research that you think that could make change at some point in time.
Also, I'd just like to say, I just got a really nice pin from you guys for my giving level or whatever.
Congratulations.
A lapel.
And thank you.
But I never have any lapels, so I. But I never have any lapels. So I, could you go back and tell them to figure out something besides?
So you would like a pin with a lapel? I'll bring that message back.
That would be good. I could do, thank you.
Yeah. What, what is your, is your pin a Wildcat or what is your pin?
It's, no, it's not a Wildcat. It's just a kind of little Chevron thing.
Well, congratulations.
Thanks. Anyway, but I would have worn it except for, Jimmy, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I know you talked about student recruitment and where that's at. We know that there's some dean positions open and just wanted to see more of, of what maybe some, how that town gown relationship can help in the recruitment of professors or if there's any obstacles we need to, to work through on that level.
It's a great question. We have four critical dean positions that are currently opening. And if you look at any land-grant university, the Vet School, the College of Engineering, the College of Agriculture, typically the three biggest colleges relative to research and relative to students. We have all three of them that are available and the dean of the graduate school. The good news is we've got incredible leadership in the interim role. And so we're, we're moving along just fine. But I think Manhattan plays an absolutely critical role as we try to think about how we can entice people to want to come to Manhattan, Kansas, showing them what's available here, not only from a, from a health standpoint, you know, from a health standpoint or from a recreation standpoint. I think there's an opportunity to, to sell Manhattan campus at a higher level, whether that's with us or whether that's with an interaction with folks from the community, you know. When, I had been to Manhattan 15 times before I looked at this role, but my wife had never been to Kansas. And I can remember her questions. And, you know, I think we're just not known well enough for this just incredible place to live and this incredible family interaction between the university and Manhattan. And I think anything that we can do to be able to help better sell this, this town and this university is a good thing.
Do you want to build a pool?
No, sir. Nope, that's, we just did our master plan. Our master plan, it was just approved by K-BOR. And there is not a pool in our master plan. However, we want to do whatever we can to be able to work with the community to try to help you guys make it happen and, you know, make sure our faculty, students and staff support it to help pay for it over time.
I think too, we've become a foodie town. We've become a lot of things that people don't kind of expect out of the middle of Kansas. And I think it's really good. I was talking to someone in physics who helped get the Ohio State high eye on physics people come, to come here. And the first thing they did was have a barbecue for them.
Well, yeah.
And the next day, they, he took a number of them to Rockabilly and found out they were all vegetarians. So.
There's, there's not a lot of choices. There are choices. My wife eats sandwiches there all the time.
I think we have broadened our, our appeal and our offerings. And there's just a lot to do. You just kind of have to get people here to see how beautiful it is.
You have to get people here. I think it's something like the numbers, like 85% of students that actually come to Manhattan, Kansas, come as a student, once they see it and feel it. And I think for athletics, it's like 89%. But you got to get them here. You got to entice them to apply, to put a submission in so that they actually have to come physically on our campus and then things change. I will tell you, when my wife and I came on this campus, it's interesting, my story is exactly like Bill Snyder's. We came on this campus, walking around, looking at things, had a map. And people didn't point to the building, made sure that we met with someone and that we were okay. And my wife kept saying, they know who you are. They, they did, they did not know who we were. And I think it's that kind of special care that people have in this community. And I can remember when we left the Super 8 Hotel, because we decided to come when there was a Baylor football game and didn't know that getting a hotel in Manhattan would not be possible. After three nights, I said, you know, what do you think? And she said, I've never met a place that's more authentic, real and genuine. And I think those are three incredible things to say about this community.
I got one last question. Land-grant university, we've got a turf management program.
Yeah.
Why do we not have grass on the football field?
Yeah, I knew this question was coming. So I'm cheating on this. But the same issue has come up at other universities. It's a whole lot less expensive. There's less injuries in general. And you want to be able to make those fields equivalent. So you can't make three fields equivalent in Bill Snyder Stadium, the outdoor and the indoor facility when, when, when you're dealing with natural turf, because you can't grow natural turf inside. So a big part of it is what the football coach believes that they need for consistency in the same kind of field. The cost of it, Clemson is an example, it's $120,000 a game for them to have their turf, their natural turf. And so I think that's the reason that K-State has natural turf across all three facilities. And when we change out one, we change out all three. They're all changed at the same time. So that turf is exactly the same as what they're going to play on game.
I noticed we did it this summer. That's why I brought it up again.
Yeah, this, this summer, I think there were some challenges with the turf that were unexpected with the sand underneath. And they had to make an unexpected, unexpected change. But it's the cost and it's the consistency. And it's faster. The play is much faster than it is on, on grass. And most of our games are on artificial, artificial turf.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Great questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll stay for a moment, we'll see if there are any questions from the audience.
You want me to come up?
Sure. Give your name and a.
Andrew Von Luntel, 225 Four Winds Court. Thank you for coming.
Sure.
Um, my que, so I came here in 2001 to K-State and the dorms were full. And there had people tucked away. And just curious how the dorms, I know we've added WeFond Hall, but just how, how full are they? How much room do you guys have to house students in the future?
Yeah, it's actually becoming a concern as we move forward relative to capacity. We're about 95% capacity right now. There is a lot of renovations that are happening, as an example, in the Strong Complex, which is three buildings. There's renovations that are happening across all three buildings. But we're going to have to come up with some solutions. If we are to get to 24,000 students, we probably don't have the occupancy that we need right now. And we might have to partner with local businesses or figure out a way to be able to get more housing for our students.
I figured, but yeah, that's what we got to do.
It's the best problem to have.
Yeah.
It's way better than saying that you have, when I first came here, we had six or seven buildings that were completely unoccupied. Good question.
Any other points to, thank you very much. We appreciate your visit.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have a police department update.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission and city staff, as well as the public. I'm Brian Pete, the Director of the Riley County Police Department in Manhattan, Kansas here. Thank you, sir. And I will give a basic update to the City Commission regarding RCPD operations and things that are going on right now. So some crime information or updates information for this month, as of reporting about crime statistics from August. Our Part One crimes, which are the, more the violent crimes that folks think of when they think about law enforcement. We are still below our five-year average, hovering around 2% below. But compared to the same time last year of August, we have roughly about a 12% increase. Keeping in mind that an increase in percentages of where we're dealing with, if you have, for example, seven instances of one crime and now you've had three that have came up, because nine times out of 10, it'll be the same actors that are involved in the same crime. You'll see a significant percentage increase. But in reality, if you go from seven to 10, you have to keep in mind what those statistics are as far as context. But so far for our Part One violent crimes, this, our last month has been the highest month of Part One violent crimes that we've had in Riley County. So of August of this year, we were about 50% above our five-year average for violent crimes. There were 14 aggravated assaults or batteries, seven instances of sexual assault, three robberies and one homicide reported during August of 2025. That homicide was a result of a preventable vehicle-related accident. It wasn't a shooting or stabbing or domestic violence issue. There are no disconcertable connections related to the sexual assault cases at this time. So we don't see as a pattern or, or a threat to the community at, at all.
Excuse, excuse me, Director Pete. When I was looking at your presentation yesterday, how do you define a preventable accident? Is that someone running a red light, going through a stop sign?
Yes, it would be something along the lines of distracted driving, something that was, I would say, out of, out, or within the control of one of the drivers involved. So if you're not messing with, messing with the radio, if you're not on the phone, if you're not eating, or if you're not intoxicated, presumably you would have the, the response, you would have the physical response capabilities to avoid the accident entirely. Thank you.
And I, I would encourage the board to ask him questions if you have questions as he goes along. I think we can make this rather informal. And I think, you know, sometimes waiting for all the end questions is complicated. Thank you.
So for, for robbery cases, we had three robberies of last month, last month, which exceeds the five-year high. Keeping in mind again, three robberies that exceeds a five-year average high. Arrests were made in two of those three robberies with information that will point to either the same individuals involved or suspects that we have in mind related to these crimes. There were four aggravated batteries, 10 aggravated assaults reported during the month of August. This was about 23% above the five-year average. There was an arrest in three of those 14 instances. Again, keeping in mind that we are developing, if not we have developed leads related to a majority of the reported crimes. Although our detectives, their caseloads have gone up. So we were looking for initially, I just spoke to one detective today. And normally we would hover, I guess, on a good time or a good day, anywhere between 12 to maybe 17 cases per detective. This particular detective had 30 cases that he was working on. So regarding the aggravated assaults and batteries, again, they're, they're isolated, if you will. There are no concernable trends in related to anything that the community itself should be concerned about. We did have a, one incident that involved a group of individuals who attacked a couple of victims in the parking garage with, down there near the moral street. And again, that this is something that we're keeping a very close eye on and working with external stakeholders, ARC, data, intelligence-led policing to try to find out times as well as involvement and then using technology to move forward on that.
Are the, are the robberies and assaults more or less in one area in town or they're just everywhere?
They're, they're scattered in different places. So we don't see any discernible patterns that are related to, that indicate there's one particular group that's committing a majority of these things. But considering the areas that these things happen at, there, there's also the likelihood, I don't want to say for certainty, but again, that this is, this will not tend to be people who are within the community or live in the community that would commit these types of incidences. And if they are, they're the ones who will be bouncing from county to county to county in the same areas, doing the same things, which is why we have very strong partnerships with Pottawatomi County, Geary County and so forth. For our Part One property crimes, we were about 10% below the five-year average. Those included five burglaries, 33 larcenies from motor vehicles, again, and six auto thefts, zero arson. The rest of the incidences were larcenies, again, just minor thefts, if you will, 47. The larcenies from motor vehicles, we just want to let folks know the majority of these larcenies are just related to just a simple lock your vehicle. They're opportunity-related crimes. For structural burglaries, we were 20% below the five-year average. For vehicle burglaries, again, we were the primary offenses of those. There were 35. And again, the spike of these burglaries is largely, we attribute to a spree of two individuals that are in custody. For motor vehicle thefts, we had about a 14% decrease. None of these thefts were related. All of the six vehicles that were stolen as of last month have been recovered. And for DUIs, we were about 6% above the five-year average. Our DUIs have been above or just below the five-year minimum every month. But again, August, we've seen an increase, not, not only in just Part One crimes, but traffic-related incidences and crashes. So outside of that, I think that is the, the majority of, or a basic summary of crime that's been going on within Riley County. We did start publishing or within these reports, something new that we started was talking about mental health-related calls for service. So in which, it calls in which there's a strong mental health-related nexus or crisis situation. We've had the lowest number of mental health-related calls for service within this month. So again, that's a good thing. I think that's attributed to our partners, to working with folks like Pawnee and other community stakeholders and resources to manage situations in which individuals may be peaking towards a crisis situation. And then we get folks help. So it never escalates to the point that law enforcement should be called for these different calls for service. Are there any questions I can answer for the Commission as related to the criminal statistics?
Kayon Khan. Thank you. Go ahead. Homelessness?
So the homelessness working group, we have been having, I think, very, very good discussions. And I think every meeting, we're seeing the amount of attendance from, whether it's city, county, government agencies, and again, community stakeholders that have been attending these meetings anticipate we're going to see more this week on Friday, when we have the next meeting, than we did last time. For this meeting, we'll be looking at sequential intercept mapping. So we'll be looking at it from two facets. It'll be interactions with law enforcement and how folks typically come to the attention of law enforcement and these services along each intercept model, if you will. When we interact with them, where are places that we can hand folks off if it's not related, if it's not a criminal-related offense? And how do we bake in those resources? And then we also look at it from another nexus that's not law enforcement-related, that individuals who are seeking out services themselves or refer to services, how do our stakeholder agencies help people from a homeless situation to finding housing? So we'll be looking at those two particular models on Friday as a group. And then each person, when, when you do sequential intercept mapping, you talk about intercept one. Every agency says, this is what we do. This is what we can offer. And, and a lot of times, there are services that certain agencies can provide that we didn't know could be provided. So we just want to make sure we're not duplicating efforts when we bring final recommendations to the city, to the county, and talk to the Chamber of Commerce or the public at large when we look at information from, as a result of this working group. So swatting incidences and targeted violence prevention, as you all may know, a few weeks ago, K-State was a victim of nationwide swatting incident in which a few perpetrators had contacted various police agencies and dispatches throughout the country, talking about a swatting incident. This particular incident, it was at the library on campus. The, the training from our dispatchers, as well as our officers and K-State PD, I think, was, was, was very instrumental in maintaining this situation to keep it from evolving into chaos. And not Monday morning quarterbacking anyone's response, because these are very stressful situations when they occur. But keeping our folks focused on what's going on, the little signals that we can pick up on, and then training and experience. We kind of knew that there was something amiss in this. So while we did have a very urgent response, it wasn't bring in everyone response. And that minimized trauma, that minimized the opportunities for officers to be hurt, members of the, of the public to be hurt. And it also minimized public or, or damage to property. So that's happened. We work, and we're working with our federal partners. That incident also saw around the same time, a wave of close calls and even active shooter situations that have happened throughout the country, whether they were for schools, public places, and even elected officials or individuals who are in the public light. That brought a lot of concern, especially for parents in schools. So we did initiate a town hall. We did it virtually and in-person to prob, to provide information to people so that folks realize that more often than not, targeted violence, or that's the law enforcement way of calling it, but active shooter violence is all. but active shooter violence, is often something that's that's known, there's a leakage. And it's something that that law enforcement or partners can see this escalating to a point. It's not a situation that you're here, nobody knew anything, and all of a sudden it just happened. It's normally when you, it's normally something that can be avoided when you have all the right people in the right places and that are talking to each other and working with each other. And that's one thing that we do very well within this community and within first responders here. So we're hoping that we that we do our best to put our community at ease and and get folks confidence in what the department is doing, what we're doing with federal agencies, to ensure that something like that never happens here within our community. The road restrictions, we're working with the Aggieville Business Association on looking at road restrictions. The there are members in the business community down moral street that would like for us to 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 eliminate the road restrictions. We have to pull more data, so we'll be working with our law enforcement or within our agencies. We'll be looking at data, we'll be reaching out to community members, we'll be reaching out to students, to Fort Riley, getting everyone, all the information we need to make a an informed decision before it, the ABA is soliciting the law board to to make a determination to end the road restrictions. I myself have been in favor of them. I believe that they they keep our officers safe, they keep members of the community safe, and they keep people who are downtown in Aggieville safe. But before we look at something like that, I want to make sure our law board has all the correct information in making this decision.
Does Fort Riley still do CP?
No, no, sir. They did eliminate that. CP would be the Courtesy Patrol in which there's a, an officer, normally a company-grade officer, and a senior enlisted member who walk up and down with our CPD. Over the last several years, there's a there's a shift in culture and response. Whether in the olden days, if you were a young soldier from base having a good time, and you saw these folks, you'd kind of perk up. Nowadays, they will just tell these, tell the officer, tell the senior enlisted, you can't do anything to me, I'm off base. And it, and then they have, like everyone else, staffing issues as well, so they did end the CP.
The folks that are pushing back on the road restrictions, is it, I've I've kind of interpreted a couple of different opinions on that. And and one that that kind of sticks out is that the the flashing lights kind of just signal to stay away, right? Because that's kind of what they're supposed to do. So is that what you're hearing as well, or is it just they don't want the road closed at all?
It it, I think it varies. I think there's a there's a culmination of different concerns that folks in the ABA have that's related to that. But for example, the flashing lights, that's that's something that's brought up a lot. The RCPD, we do not use flashing lights. In the beginning, when we were initiating road restrictions, we were using flashing lights. The ABA and other folks said that they didn't want that, it was a distraction, so we stopped that. But we have safety requirements, so we might have on a parking light. But they're they're a constant flash, it's not a flash, the light's just steadily on. So you might have one blue light, one red light, that's just, just stays illuminated, but it's not bright to the point that folks would think that it's a crime scene. I also think that a majority of young people nowadays are accustomed to seeing law enforcement or seeing road closures in places where they're an entertainment area. So if you go to Beale Street, if you go to Nashville, if you go to any other places. So I think there are discussions in that, and that's one of the reasons why we also want to reach out to the younger crowd and find out, hey, is this something that that's that's a turnoff to you? Because the majority of folks that are frequenting the Aggieville area during these times are people from either Fort Riley or students or visitors.
So is there a, it's been a while since I've been down to Aggieville after three PM. Is there a set time, like, is this a constant, always on the weekend? Or is it a response to when concerns arise, the the plan for the road restrictions right now?
Yes, ma'am. So initially, what we tried to do was minimize the times that we, we didn't want to initiate road restrictions because we were aware of 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 the concerns that the business community did have. But we we learned that first, there's a consistency issue. So if we're not, in in certain cases, if we don't see that, if if we close the roads or if we restrict the roads, I'm sorry, this weekend, and then wait three other weekends, then it throws folks off as far as their planning, how they're getting home, how they're getting to and in around Aggieville area. But we've also found that even though initially, again, we thought that we would say, okay, during game days, that we know people are coming in town, there's going to be a huge in crowd or or a crowd here, we're going to look at implementing road restrictions at a certain time. Or when we see that it's grown to a to a a situation that we can't control or see things. But we've realized that it doesn't have to be a huge crowd for emergency situations to potentially develop. So we could have, on some days, we could have thousands of people down in the Aggieville area, and everything runs fine. Other days, we may have individuals from coming out of, you know, coming into Manhattan from other places, and we don't have as many as we did in other places, but we'll see a lot of fights breaking or starting up in different areas. So it's not a just, it's not a cause and effect because of the amount of people, it's just something that had happened.
Not saying we want to go there, but when it was brought up that this was happening literally every single weekend was like
What was happening every single weekend?
Closing of
Closing, the road restrictions every weekend?
Is that if we really thought that needed to be, whether we wouldn't want to come back to the city to have ballards at the top of Moro, simply to say, if this is going to be every weekend, can we do it in a manner that there aren't police cars and everything else there? So it's just almost more of a normal at this time, it's a walking district. Well, there'll still be cars, because if your car was there beforehand, you're still going to go out. But at that point in time, if we literally think it's something that every single weekend we're going to need to, should we look at doing it differently?
So what is the current, when when are the roads restricted?
We look at restricting them typically on Friday and Saturday evenings, normally at around the time of eleven o'clock to after bar closes. Normally around two o'clock.
How long for the kind of data research period to to be? I I guess my encouragement, you don't have to give me a timeframe, is to to have that happening sooner rather than later. I think this has been a conversation for a a long time and need to get somewhere with it.
Yes, we already have the data. We need to reach out to the community, get the data from surveys and folks from the community. And we have initial data. We just want to make sure it's it's still fresh and current. The other part of that is, again, we we also, and we are having meetings, we have another one scheduled with the ABA to talk about this. But we have to nail down exactly what the concerns are, whether it's police presence, whether it's the road restrictions entirely, the we we need to find out and and hammer that down.
Yeah, and I think that that would go both ways, of like, the community understanding very clearly what you've, the RCPD feels like their purpose really is in that that situation, but yeah.
Brian, how many, how many patrol do you have? How many bodies, how many policemen do you have between twelve and two down there?
So we we have the situation staffed at at the highest level of of officers. The way that the schedule works, the majority of, the largest amount of officers on duty will be, will be between, will be at least on those days of Friday and Saturday. So the the most amount of officers that we can pay and have on shift, we have them down there. So we'll have officers that are assigned to regular calls for service, and then we'll have officers that are specifically assigned to work the Aggieville corridor. So I would say any given time, again, please don't hold me to the to the number, but the times that I've been working down there, we're looking at, I don't know, it could be around eight officers or more.
So you're pulling from other places in Manhattan to have that coverage?
No, we just work the scheduling around that we have different squads, different staffing requirements. Oh, I apologize. Highest number of officers.
Did you break our microphone?
Oh, nope, I didn't. The highest number of officers are staffed on that position. So we're trying not to rob Peter to pay Paul for the for the time, for those Fridays and Saturdays.
Yeah, I just want to point out, I I do recognize that it is a a fine line between safety and burdensome restrictions. And and so I do understand that we have to navigate that line, and and people do want a safe Aggieville. We also want an active Aggieville, so it is, it is a fine line that all, both, everyone's walking in that.
Yes, ma'am, a hundred percent. And we we want to make sure that 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 we let folks know that we understand that as well. We we don't want to encroach upon anyone's businesses. We don't want people to have a negative thought in the Aggieville area. So those are things that we certainly, we don't, we don't want to dictate how things work, but we're also trying to look at our data, look at the numbers, and look at the safety initiatives, and then see if we, if we can do our best to come to a compromise. But we need to ensure that the data that we have from the outside is going to match the needs before we present it to the law board, ERGO, as the city as well.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, ma'am, I just have a few quick more, so our staffing levels. We are, our CPD is, will remain at very healthy staffy levels. We are around hovering at at the minimum at certain areas, will be eighty percent. But we're we're doing extraordinarily well. It depends on the the different career path, whether it's corrections. And typically, we'll see more dips in corrections, because we'll have corrections officers that will move to the side to become patrol officers. For our average daily population, we're still getting high in that. Again, that we are a one-hundred-and-forty-three-bed facility, but if you add, if you look at the requirements for categorization, we can't have one-hundred-and-forty-three folks within the jail, because if we have to classify someone that they're a violent offender as compared to someone who's a DUI, you don't want to mix those two folks together. So realistically, we're only at about one-hundred-and-twenty-five. And we've consistently been above that the last few months. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, we were sitting at one-hundred-and-thirty-seven people in the jail on a Saturday. So our ADP, or average daily population, this month will probably be around one-thirty.
Are you still transferring women to other lockup places?
We we weren't initially, we were, but now that we've seen a decrease in the 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 female population, but about a week and a half ago, I think that went back up. But yes, we are still getting folks out to other jails to house them.
You really only have one pod for women, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And so it's hard to really categorize them and have people who have committed minor things and with people who have committed major things.
Yes, ma'am. Really quick, the Trinity Healthcare situation, this was a, we had found a program in which the Affordable Care Act was able to cover individuals who are arrested. Once you're arrested, if you are in jail for longer than twenty-nine days, if you're on Medicare Medicaid, you lose that. And those, any medical or health expenses are incurred by the county. We found Trinity Healthcare, and we were going to initiate that. But literally about a week ago, it came down from the government that that part is no longer applicable. So so now, we still will sign folks up for healthcare. So when they get out, we'll sign them up through the Affordable Care Act. So as, especially like when we look at things like the Homelessness Task Force, folks who are in a mental health crisis who don't have insurance, we sign folks up if they come within our facility. And then when they're out, they're able to utilize, they and their families, to utilize healthcare services. So we know that while internally it's not going to help us, it no longer help us fiscally with our budgeting, it will make a huge difference into the hospital and to other community stakeholder organizations.
Yeah, and I think that's something for the public to understand. And and having been on the law board, and John, of course, understands that, but also as a county commissioner, the medical costs are quite astronomical sometimes. And you know, we've had people that were in palliative care for two months and things like that, so.
Yes, ma'am. Again, like, sometimes with the homelessness population, we may deal with someone who has gangrene, and then we are responsible for that. And so we're we're taking people to hospitals, we're sending staff to sit on them, and going through operations and things to that effect. We also, we did purchase the body scanner, and we will have that up and running. This is something that will minimize risk and liability to the agency to make sure that people aren't bringing in contraband to the jail. Finally, the last slide is the IACP, the International Associations of Chiefs of Police, Weber CV in Excellence in Law Enforcement Award. We were up for that. And we got notified a few weeks ago that unfortunately, they chose a different agency. But kudos to our department for being recognized and for competing within it. The two thousand twenty-seven budget, I've told our staff that we're looking at keeping that budget flat. And when a flat, I mean that we're not going to be asking for COLA. We're not going to be asking for anything, for additional things, unless it's something that we can't cover. And if we need it, I'll have to find ways within the budget to make sure that happens. So things like, but when there's increases, I, yeah, we will aim for that. When there, when we look at things like merit increases, that's what we'll go for. We may be coming back, but I will not be asking for COLA. We'll be looking for any of those increases to be internal, whether we cut and reallocate. Are there any questions I can answer or any thoughts about that?
You guys have to pay for bailiffs?
I'm sorry?
You, the, our CPD has to pay for bailiffs?
For bailiffs? We do have to provide security assistance to the courts. But so that's one of the things that we're looking at. It's cheaper that if we hire someone like a retiree who can carry a weapon to serve as a bailiff for security, and whether it's municipal court or county court, than it is to have an officer take them off the street and have them working security. I think we could be more effective by kind of having a retiree there as a bailiff, and then moving the officer on the street to handle initiatives.
Okay.
But are there any questions I can hand or answer about that, ma'am? Nothing? Okay. All right, so quickly, moving on, September twentieth, the, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We did have the Responsible Dog Ownership Day, the event with the Manhattan Kennel Club. Very good turnout for us there. September tenth to the twenty-fifth, we've been assisting USD three-eighty-three with their lockdown drills for active shooter violence. It's their, USD three-eighty-three is doing a lot of good things, but it's still disturbing when you have to see kids who have to be trained on hiding and what they need to do, and and teachers who are having very difficult conversations with kids and answering very difficult questions. So I really sincerely applaud three-eighty-three and all the students, or all the teachers who are there. October seventh, National Night Out, we're going to have that at the Ogden Community Center. That's going to be, I'm sorry, five to eight PM. We'll be cooking, having touch a truck, if you will, there. And then finally, October eighteenth, our CPD will be leading the Pride Parade in Riley Kent, in Riley, Kansas.
Okay.
Are there any questions that I can answer for any member?
Any questions?
Yeah, so last year, we bought cameras and software to, for the license plates. I can't remember, what was the name of the company that we?
Flock Safety, sir.
What's it called?
Well, there there's two different sets of cameras. So we have automated license plate readers, which is Flock Safety. And then we do have push-tilt zoom cameras, and then bullet cameras, that they're called. They're verkata cameras in certain places within Aggie.
They're what cameras?
Bullet cameras. They're just like a X-shaped camera, but they're called bullet cameras. Not a very tasteful way of saying it, but that's what they're for.
And what, how are we ensuring that the, like, the ARC safety data and like that kind of data is secure and remains within your possession and direct control?
Yes, sir. So that, so all the data that's put into the system is kept for us. The companies do not have access to that data, that data is strictly for us. And then it's SEGIS compliant, so there are certain safeguards that are required. Password mechanisms, dual authentication, and other things in the background with APIs and IT that's related to to ensure that 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 information is safe and secure. So the companies that we work, they're very reputable. We do have all those in place. And again, that data is ours. They don't have access to that.
What about the other agencies, state and federal, anything like that?
No, they don't have access to the data. If anyone wants to, if there there is sharing of information, so say, for example, if there's an Amber Alert, other, the state may reach out to us and ask us if 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 any of our cameras seen this vehicle coming through within our jurisdiction, or one, one-on-one, case-by-case situations, but they will reach out to us. Nobody has blanket access to our information.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the audience? See, none? Okay. Danielle, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
I I do, actually. I'm going to ask Finance Director Rena Neal to step up to the podium and give you all an update on our audit for two thousand twenty-four. We had originally thought that we would have a special meeting on September thirtieth. However, as Rena will share with you- However, um, as Rena will share with you, um, there has been a holdup in getting the audit completed, um, not on the city's end. Um, but, uh, we will not be having a special meeting next week and I'll let, um, Rena give you an update. And then after Rena gives her update, sorry Rena, um, uh, I'm going to ask Erin Stewart to come up and give you all an update on the, uh, zoo accreditation, uh, that we just did a week ago.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Rena Neal, Director of Finance. So as, um, Danielle mentioned, we had intended to come before you on September thirtieth to have the audit presented. We are still in the review phase. Um, part of our audit includes the Manhattan Housing Authority as well as the library, their component units. The library is still, um, is complete, however, the Housing Authority is still working through their audit. We are in the review phase with AGH and finalizing our portion will be done about this week. But, um, we cannot incorporate or finish the audit without the Manhattan Housing Authority's audit. Um, in addition, we would have to go to the Municipal Audit Board to just present that audit to them for their review. And if they have any comments, then they would come before you with the formal presentation of the audit similar to what we did in February for the two thousand twenty-three audit.
Excuse me, Rena?
Yes, ma'am.
The, um, Municipal Audit Commission, is that a state level office that?
No, it's city, it's a city board committee. So it's comprised of three, um, public and then Commissioner Minton is our city commissioner that's on the committee.
Can, can you tell me more about it?
Uh, no, we've had one meeting.
Yes.
Uh, we're waiting for the audit so that we can review it.
So we meet quarterly, um, at least up to four times a year. Commissioner Mata was on there prior. And we have, um, Rich Jankovic as well as Dr. Eric Higgins, and then we have a new lady that just was recently appointed as well. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, apologies for having forgotten that.
No, you're perfectly fine.
It's hard to.
And so are there any question, other questions before I continue? So we anticipate hopefully having the audit done probably within the first week or so in October. Um, it just all depends on what Manhattan Housing Authority, again, the Finance Department and AGH are working closely with BTN Co. To finalize our portions of everything. So we're in the review phase, everything that we've completed, our financials, just double checking them. And then we'll go from there once we get Manhattan Housing Authority's audit. I do want to talk about like future planning and thinking about our two thousand and twenty-five audit. The first thing, our agreement with BTN Co., it does end after the two thousand and twenty-four audit. So we will need to consider extending that agreement. And I would recommend that we do do that because we have switched to a new financial software. So trying to go out and get a new set of auditors, um, with the switch to a new financial software will be pretty challenging. So that's one thing that we will present before the end of the year is to that extension. Another thing that we, um, want to talk about, or I want to talk about is the fact that we did switch to a new financial system. Just making sure that we are doing our due diligence regarding the financial reports that come out of the system, comparing them to what our current or our previous system had. There's just going to be a learning curve for AGH as well as BTN Co. We do intend to have, um, some, um, debriefing meetings after this audit is complete to just talk about, um, just lessons learned, how we can create some efficiencies, improve the process. I think that compared to the two thousand twenty-three audit, being behind in the two thousand twenty-two audit, we're in a better position than we have been in the last two to three years in terms of the completion of our audits. Um, but we do want to see about improving that process. So AGH has recommended that they would prepare our financial statements as well as our notes. It's kind of cumbersome to have, um, that leg of BTN Co. do all of that and then we go back and double check their work when AGH is already helping us to prepare a lot of the adjustments and those things to prepare for the audit. So that's one of the things that we plan to switch to is that, to have them assist with that. They already assist us with the preparation of a lot of our work papers as well as the new GASP pronouncements related to subscriptions and leases and things of that nature. And then, um, the only other thing is, it's minor, but we will need to secure a license, uh, for our financial software. So AGH can have access to that so they can start learning the system. They currently utilize our green screen, our old platform, just to pull reports and help us navigate through the audit process without having to interrupt staff to get that information. So we'll get a license for them so they can start learning that system and doing some training on that. And then we intend to provide a draft of our financials. Um, Moody's requests that, um, a draft is provided by October tenth, but hopefully we can have that before then. Um, probably by the end of the week, we'll have another set of financials in terms of if there's been any adjustments that we could provide to Moody's so they can start reviewing our information as well.
Okay. Rena, just a couple of questions, that switch to AGH, that's kind of a, within the budget to switch to them helping with the?
We c- currently have money budgeted within our Finance Department for consulting professional services. And so there's money in there to allow for that.
I just didn't know if that was going to be coming back as the request to switch can, funny, but it sounds like it's in there.
It probably will be like the offset between the actual preparation by BTN Co. compared to then transferring that over to AGH.
And then what are our potential ramifications if Manhattan Housing doesn't get their, Housing Authority doesn't get their audit complete? I mean, are we at a concerning point where we need to be doing something different to make sure we're meeting our timelines?
It's not that they don't get their audit complete, it's just the timeliness of them getting them complete.
Right.
And so it's a matter of who their auditors are and just working with them to express the importance of getting it complete. Auditing is a very different profession and so it's fluid. Um, it just based on their availability and, uh, I guess you could say the staff's resources to be able to respond to the needs of the auditors as well. So we have to have that portion complete in order to complete ours. There's no exclusion of it, we have to have it.
And when do we have to have our entire thing done?
We normally need to have it done by September thirtieth. That's the like federal guidelines in terms of having it complete by September thirtieth. So you can, um, report to Emma and then also the Federal Audit Clearing House. And so there's times where that's not the case, and so it's just delayed.
And what are the potential ramifications of it being delayed?
I don't know, in terms of besides our, um, bond rating.
Yeah.
Um, but again, we're going to provide a draft of our financials, um, to Moody's so they can see where our numbers are.
Does our new software limit the number of companies that could work with us, the number of auditors? I mean, I don't have a problem with going ones we have, but, but, um.
No, I don't think it limits who could work with us. It's just a matter of that transition to learning our financials and our chart of accounts and the whole entire like system and process that we have in place in terms of our financial pro, policies and procedures. That is more of the challenge than anything else. I would say when you, we do recruit, they have to have experience with federal audits.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of municipalities, um, don't have the extensive, um,
Background.
Background, I would say, with federal audits. So some of them do cash basis type audits and not, um, a gap audit.
Um, when did we last do an RFP for auditors, you know?
About four years ago.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And we try to do that every four years, the same with our banking services.
Other questions? Questions in the audience?
Can I, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Before Andrew gets up? Just as a reminder, I'm, I'm being kind of picky. The question that you asked, um, President Linton was a great question, but as a reminder, questions come to us. In this small of crowd, I understand why it's easier for us to have discussion. But on other nights, I think in just trying to be fair to everyone across the board, just asking that questions come this way, is that?
That is correct, the appropriate protocols, it's, it's an opportunity to provide a comment, um, not necessarily ask a question. Um, if you do have a question, Commissioners can direct staff, um, to answer it if they wish to. Thank you.
Andrew Vaughn Luntal, two twenty-five, Four Winds Court. Um, so, this audit, I guess is going to be delayed because of the Housing Authority. I am curious, the previous years when we've missed this audit, has it been a similar, has it been Housing Authority? Has it been another department? Has it been multiple departments? What's causing these delays?
In the past, it could have been the Housing Authority's delay. It is Finance Department in terms of our staffing and our resources. So it's a multitude of different reasons. Um, traditionally in the past, we had someone on staff that was a CPA. That, that was, her main focus was responsibility of the audit and preparing the financial report. And that was usually done and approved at the beginning of October. And then once she resigned, um, it was solely my responsibility. And so we have had staffing issues from two thousand thirteen to present. We do have some staff that assist, um, and like I said, and having AGH. We didn't start getting AGH to assist us until the two thousand and twenty-one audit. Um, and we were already transitioning from eight, um, Barney and Associates to BTN Co. So it's been a combination of things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erin, I hear you have good news for us.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, yes, we do have good news. Um, last, a week ago Saturday, uh, we were in Tampa, Florida for the, uh, Sunset Zoo's accreditation hearing. Um, the zoo has been accredited for several years. Um, but in the zoo world, you don't re-accredit, you accredit each time. And it's actually a pretty significant process. Um, and it's, it's, it's a big deal because if you're not accredited, uh, you can lose things like certain parts of the animal collection. Um, and it really impacts the zoo in a negative way. I'm happy to report, uh, thanks to the hard work of the staff. Uh, we did get accredited, uh, a week ago and, um, that accreditation will last for the next five years. We do have some follow-up reporting to do, which is not uncommon with accreditation. Um, but I, I think we, they really came back into the room after about three minutes of deliberation, which is a really good sign. Um,
Or bad sign.
That, that, well, yeah, in this particular case, it was a good sign, um, that, that, uh, that the staff did a really good job. So credit to, to Scott Schumaker and his team over at the zoo, um, who, uh, had a lot of paperwork and a lot of detail work to get that accreditation. Um, so, uh, really proud of those guys and they did a good job.
I think it's really important, you know, the police have an accreditation too, and people say, well, why do you bother doing that? You know, but it, it does show that you rank with your peers. And, you know, the only thing I hope is you didn't show a picture of all those people drinking beer in the zoo.
So actually those events do play well for us, so.
I know, I know.
Um, yeah, and I, and I'll say this because I do intend to have Parks and Recreation go for CAPRA accreditation. The difference is with zoo accreditation, it literally changes your operation. It would not necessarily change our operation. Only ten percent of the zoos in the country are accredited. So it's pretty significant, especially from a municipal zoo, to put the time and effort to do that. So again, I just throw a lot of accolades to the zoo team and their work in that.
And, and please convey our congratulations to them as well.
Will do.
And I think one thing that isn't stressed enough is membership in the zoo gets you into all kinds of other zoos. Wonderful zoos like the Omaha Zoo and, you know, the St. Louis Zoo, and so it's really up.
Yes, the, the membership network throughout, uh, and specifically AZA, um, at a minimum, it'll get you usually a discount if not entrance into that zoo. So that's a good point.
And it's usually a good enough discount to pay for your membership if you're, you know, taking four or five people to the Omaha Zoo.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to Erin's point is I did learn, um, something, I, I had an opportunity to, to go and sit in on the hearing. Um, so I appreciated that. Um, the only thing that I would add to, to Erin's point and what I learned, um, was actually that being accredited means that our animals are given the exact same standard of care that those big zoos, the San Diego Zoo, the Omaha Zoo are, are given. And so it just really impressed upon me the importance of, um, this cultural amenity, um, that we have in our community and how, how important it is. So I want to, again, just say my congratulations to, um, Scott and Erica and Heather and all the other folks who worked on that. Um, and, and all of our folks who volunteer, um, at the zoo, so we appreciate it.
And actually, I would like to add, it's unfortunate that President Linton has left. But I think that this also is a really nice example that we don't give enough attention to of town yound collaboration. I mean, the, I, my understanding is that, uh, the vet, the vet school at K-State is an important asset to maintaining the health of our, of our animals.
Yes, we don't actually have a, a staff that, we have a partnership with K-State that, to provide vet services, uh, to all the animals. And, and they obviously use that as a teaching instrument for, uh, animals that you're not normally going to come see walking through the door, uh, uh, at the vet clinic.
Might not want to see them going. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the, uh, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five work session.
Second.
Moving second, would you call the roll? Oh, would you say yes?
Aye.